Are we ready? Calling me in order, please rise with pleas of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Doc Parlin from the Southwest Wake Baptist Church. Welcome back Pastor and related, happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna read just something a little different, just briefly. Today is Saint Patrick's Day. And the two verses that I just want to read before I pray reminds us of our responsibility that we as citizens have to our community. Thank the Lord for our mayor, Mayor Protem, and the councilmen and women, and our town attorney and manager and clerk. But I want you to listen to what God says, "Our responsibility as a citizen here," and how it affects the city. Proverbs 11, written by Solomon, who was the son of King David, and Solomon himself was a king. He said, "When it goes well with the righteous, the city rejoices." The righteous are saints. Saints are those that have a personal relationship with Jesus Christ. And people that profess to be Christians, when they live right, and do right, and act right, it goes better for the city. The city rejoices. When the wicked perish, there's jubilation. Then verse 11 says, "By the blessing of the upright, the city is exalted, but is overthrown by the mouth of the wicked." So, our responsibility, and what a day to be reminded of it on Saint Patrick's Day, is that how we live, and what kind of citizens we are, and how we love and love our neighbor makes a difference in whether the city's gonna rejoice. And may God help us to make our city better, because we live better and we act better. Let's pray. Father, thank you for our city. We thank you for our leadership. We thank you for Mayor Sears and his fine counsel, and all the staff that work with him, and those that are not even here, but they're taking care of safety, and the police force, and the firemen, and the parks and recreation. Thank you for all the plans for the city, and the special sports facilities, and Lord, the need for wisdom and guidance and additional funds. Thank you for what's available for road problems, and they're trying to correct it. And God help us to be patient, and we pray you'd provide all the funds that's needed. Pray that you might bless in this meeting tonight. We pray that all that's done, it'll be done decently and order, there might be unity and harmony. And God, we challenge ourselves that we would make our city better, because we're determined to live different and to please you. We ask thy blessing, we give thanks. Thank you for the beautiful weather, thank you for bringing us through those difficult weeks and months of the winter, and we look forward to a great spring and the rest of this year, and we ask thy blessing and give thanks. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor.
Thanks so much.
Before we go to item four, I didn't have a chance to say a couple of things before everybody stood up. So, a couple of things. Mayor's Youth Advisory Board's here, would you stand up and yell? Or say something? What were you gonna say?
Happy Saint Patrick's Day!
That's it! That's it! Thank you very much. Also, Councilwoman Lynda Hutt-Williams has an excused absence tonight, she will not be here. Now we go to item number four, adjustment approval of March 17th, 2015 meeting agenda, Mayor Protem.
Oh, here's the movement right along.
I'm just fascinated.
Motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
Second.
Motion made second on favor.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passed unanimously. Item number five, public comment, period. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes. And Dorothy Leslie, am I correct? Come on up. And if you would come up to the podium and tell us your name and your address, and then your comments. Up here. Try to speak into the mic if you can. And she was the first one here, so, welcome.
Hello. My name is Dorothy Leslie. I live at 101 West Maple Avenue in Holly Springs. I've been a resident of Holly Springs, self, all my life, basically. And I have a dog, and it's a Sashai carrier, and I have been receiving some, not, I can't really say harassment, but in the sense it is harassment. And I'm here tonight to ask whoever it is that's here, I'm not breaking any laws, I take care of my dog, he's not on a chain, he's on a cord, I mean, on a cable, and it's not, it does not exceed his weight. He eats properly every day, he has fresh water every day, and the only problem is, is that I don't keep him inside my house. And like I said, I'm not breaking any law, I take care of him, I'm not, he's not malnutritioned or any of that. So, I'm asking, can y'all just please leave me alone and let me take care of my dog? I feel that I shouldn't have to, if I don't wanna have the dog in my house, then I shouldn't have to have him in my house just to obtain a dog. So, I'm asking y'all tonight, please just leave me alone.
Well, thank you. You're fortunate in the fact that the Chief of Police happens to be here tonight, and you'll recognize him with the black uniform in the back, so chat with him before you leave. Would you do that?
Thank you.
We'll do what we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this point in time, we'll close the public hearing, and, public comment, excuse me, and go to the public hearings. Agenda item 6A, public hearing, budget preparation, public hearing, our town manager Chuck Simmons.
You're up.
Hello.
For the budget, yeah.
Yeah.
We were talking, I'm sorry to get past the head.
Yeah, we had Adam.
Oh, okay.
Will be added to the agenda. But no, this is something that's actually not required by law, but it's a Holly Springs tradition, and I think it dates back since I've been working here in 2001. I think this tradition predates even that time. It's an opportunity for residents to come forward if they have questions or comments that they might like to make, or issues that they would like for us to consider when we start preparing for the FY 2015-16 budget, which we are currently in the early stages of preparing. We've, we'll have a follow-up once the budget's been prepared. We'll take these comments into consideration, we'll also get budget requests from the various department heads. We'll put a budget together, and it will be submitted in a month or so, and at that time, we'll have another public hearing, and the council will have, or actually be submitted to the council, and a public hearing date will be set, and then we'll have a second public hearing, if you will. So, the public in Holly Springs has two opportunities, not just one to comment on the budget. One, before the budget is prepared, and then one after it's been submitted to you for your review.
That'll be Mayor June. Mayor June?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this will be the first step in that process, or first official step in that process.
Super. Before we open the public hearing, any comments from the board?
Yeah, I can, I'll just share that, and really, this is not the only opportunity that people have to share their thoughts, really, really, at any time during the year, or email, any meeting, basically, phone calls to us, whatever it might be. So, you don't have to wait for an agenda item to be framed as a budget public hearing, you can always, always share those thoughts, really, at any time.
I could just add to that, Mayor's Youth Advisory Board met Thursday, was it? Yeah. And they had several issues that they'd like to bring in front of whoever was responsible for, and I asked them the same thing. I said, "Please send me an email, I got one today on roads," and that's the easy way to take care of things. So, send us an email, if you would, you can send it to the right persons or person, and take it from there. So, thank you. Okay? At this point in time, a little public hearing. Peter, I want to say this right, Villetson, am I close enough?
Villetson.
Villetson, okay. Got it.
It's called Peter.
Peter, whatever. And please, your name and address, and then go.
My name is Peter Villetson, I live at 213 Chris Mill Lane, and just want to thank you all for hearing our input on this pre-budget hearing now, and as Councilman Dixon said, through all any other resource that you all put at our disposal. I would like for the town to find the resources in the upcoming budget to create a Citizens' Committee on Traffic. This committee would consist of appointed citizens from all parts of Holly Springs who live and breathe Holly Springs Road and traffic at various times of day. These citizens could report on traffic hotspots, areas of safety concerns, and changes in traffic patterns that they're beginning to see in their own use. The town can use these citizens to educate people on what the town can and cannot do with regards to traffic, and also disseminate information on future road projects, hopefully with more input from these citizens. I view this as a win-win situation. I would also like to see the town assign resources to codify various provisions in the town's UDO, such that town staff, planning board, and town council can better enforce the ideas and goals of our UDO. As an example, I'm gonna talk, quote, a little bit extensively from the UDO regarding trees. "It is the intent of these regulations to protect, preserve, and enhance the forested areas of natural resources of the town of Holly Springs and its extraterritorial jurisdiction. The town of Holly Springs finds the presence of trees, improves air quality, conserves energy, provides wildlife habitat, reduces soil erosion, enhances stormwater detention and drainage, assures the presence of healthy, mature vegetation to comply with the landscape requirements of this UDO, as undeveloped sites are proposed for development, and preserves and enhances property values in the town of Holly Springs and its extraterritorial jurisdiction. The policy of the town of Holly Springs is to balance the private property rights of landowners with the public health and safety and welfare that is promoted by the existence and maintenance of trees in the town of Holly Springs and its extraterritorial jurisdiction." I feel those are pretty strong words, coming from the UDO regarding maintaining trees in our town. The issue in, excuse me, the issue of enforcement was even brought up in a recent planning board meeting, and the town did not have an answer to that. In this case, the UDO is a nice thought, but there's no way to enforce this when new subdivisions pop up. There's no incentive for the developers to maintain a tree population, and hence we get hundreds of acres that are clear-cut. I urge the town to establish clear guidelines that allow for the enforcement of the goals of our UDO. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, give me a call tomorrow, or the next day, will you? Do you need my number? All right. All right, we'll talk more. Anybody else, since that's the only one that signed up, anybody else want to talk about the budget? Or similar items? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And again, to remind you, another hearing will be in May or June, and in the meantime, as Councilman Dixon said, send us an email, pass the word. If somebody's got something they want to say, bring it on, okay? Agenda item 7A, the consent agenda, Mayor Protem.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made second on favor.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion passed unanimously, thank you. Agenda item number 8A, new business ordinance to regulate golf carts. Counselor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
This is my gift to you.
I'm just honored.
You've been asking for this ordinance for a while, and I apologize for the delay in getting it to you, but what you have before you is, for your consideration, a ordinance which would allow the operation of golf carts in the town of Holly Springs on town roads or public vehicular areas that are posted 25 miles per hour or less. State law had changed a couple of years back. There didn't prior, did not have a, previously, there was a lot of towns, particularly coastal towns, that had local legislation to allow this, and a couple of years back, the General Assembly made its, gave the option to all municipalities to enact the golf cart ordinance, to allow golf carts on the roads. Up till now, including now, it is illegal to drive a golf cart on the road, so I've been a personal violator during a shotgun start at a golf course event where you have to, where you can't exactly go from, start it at the first hole and continue on, so, you know, I think we've all, we've all broken the law at one point or another, unfortunately. So, this would make that practice legal. It does require a couple of things that might be different. If you're going to own a golf cart that you use for your operation, you have to have lights on it, and taillights, and turn signals, and working brakes, hopefully they all have them, but also seatbelts, and, like I said, headlights. We're, staff suggesting to limit it only to drivers 18-years-old, licensed drivers 18-years of age or older. All passengers must be, you know, in a seatbelt while riding, and there's gonna be an annual registration process, and as part of that process, the owner would have to provide some sort of documentation to the town before getting that permit, that they had their vehicle, their golf cart looked at and is in proper working order. That's a little different than, the model ordinance was taken from Emerald Isle. Emerald Isle actually had town staff to go out there and look, make sure everything's inspected, the golf cart. That's probably not what I would recommend that you do. It does put a little bit of, you know, hey, you guys looked at it, and the brakes failed, so it's a little bit on you, kind of thing. I don't think it shifts the burden of negligence to the front town at all, even if they were to have a staff inspection. However, we don't frankly have the staff, and we don't have the staff expertise to say what the good working golf cart was on, so leave that up to, you know, the golf cart guy down the street that can do it. So, the only, with, you know, I think that the ordinance, if you're willing to entertain it, is ready to go. The only maybe hanging issue would be whether or not you want to charge, and how much you would like to charge, an annual registration fee. I think that fee has to be adopted as part of the town's annual budget, so maybe the first go-around, if everybody gets a free pass, because we don't, you know, the budget isn't established unless you'd like to amend the budget to include that fee, which you can certainly do, but, you know, for clarity, I mean, everybody might get a free pass until July 1st, when the new budget is enacted. Other than that, it's just up to your consideration and any questions that you may have, and it's unfortunate that Chief Herring's in outside of the room, but...
Chief Smith, could you ask Chief Herring if he can come in now? While we're doing that, because I want him to talk about the same thing, too. Let me give you a couple of things that happened that started this whole process. First of all, it's been going on for a long time. I have just a few of the emails here with me, that, for people who want an ordinance and some kind of protection, especially when you see things like I've seen, with kids who are 13 or 14-years-old, driving across, and I've seen this myself, across Holly Springs Road against the stoplight in the daytime. Last night, I talked about this and asked the same questions to every mayor in the county. There are, I think, four or five towns that have such a thing, and some of them don't. Of course, some of them don't have anything at all as far as golf courses. But the main thing that got me going was way back when, when Kerry had a kid killed in Preston, and that's another reason why this is very similar, as I recall, to their ordinance, too. So, my point is, I think we need one, but I would ask the Chief of Police, because we worked together on this for a long time, if he would mind coming forward and speaking a few choice words about your thoughts on this. Because whatever we do, he's gotta be on the same team. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
I won't divulge your age, you can do that if you want to.
I just hit 50. Anybody want to buy a bridge?
I'm not far behind, then.
All right.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this, and I, just for the record, I'm not here to lobby for or against this ordinance. I just appreciate the opportunity to, I guess, speak to the impact that this ordinance would have on law enforcement, and oftentimes, not necessarily at the local level, but at state and federal, when legislation is passed, it seems sometimes there's no consideration given to, you know, the law enforcement piece of it. So, I appreciate the opportunity to have some input on it. I think the main thing that I would like to say is, I think what this ordinance will do for us, the police department, from an enforcement standpoint, is sort of clarify, you know, what the expectation is. Because one thing that we know for a fact is that residents in Holly Springs have golf carts, and they operate them on public roadways. So, that's the issue. The question is how we address that. Oftentimes, the officers get caught sort of in between a rock and a hard place, and they're seen as aggressive or overzealous when they enforce certain laws. We definitely want them to enforce, you know, state laws and local ordinances, and we want them to do it consistently. So, that's what we ask of them, but we get some pushback sometimes when certain state laws are enforced, and this is one of them. So, as it stands right now, if there was no ordinance in place, we have a, we have a North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 20, that covers golf carts. And it, under almost all circumstances, would prohibit golf carts from being operated on public roadways. That's what we have right now. I think what this ordinance would do for us is, again, it would sort of set what the expectation is from the public, the council, about how we approach this, and to what extent we approach the enforcement of golf cart laws. What it'll do is that it basically says that, you know, under certain circumstances and conditions, that it will be okay to operate a golf cart, and we've established those in this ordinance. And that makes it a little bit, I think, easier, and it clarifies some things for the officers who are out there trying to enforce it. If the council passes this ordinance, then it, the officers feel like that this ordinance is supported wholeheartedly, because there's different opinions and interpretations, sometimes when it comes to state law. You know, state law's passed across the board, it doesn't really take into consideration, you know, the uniqueness of Holly Springs, or any municipality or township, and they have a lot of golf courses or beach property. I've reviewed this ordinance, and I like this ordinance, I'm very familiar with it. It is modeled after Emerald Isle, North Carolina. I've spoke with the police department there, the town manager there, and they've had some really good success with this ordinance. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions to Chief, for comments?
Chief, the golf carts that we drive illegally on, the shotgun starts and things, the ones that we have in town now, that kids are riding around, going to the pool and other things that are hanging off, do not fit this definition here of the golf carts. So, they would have to be upgraded to meet our standards as far as to be allowed on these streets. What do you do with the golf carts right now, or even this is passed, when you find them on the street? Are they given a ticket? How are they handled if they don't meet this requirement?
Currently, again, it would be, you know, state law, that, whatever general statute...
Once we pass this, though?
Once this was passed, then it would be a fine. If they were in violation of this ordinance, or any piece of this ordinance, then they would be fined.
If it's a licensed driver, would it be a moving violation type thing? Or if it's a juvenile, what kind of a...
Well, the officer would still have, the officer would still have some latitude and some discretion as to whether or not to apply the state law or the ordinance, you know. So, I think in most cases, the ordinance would be, you know, would be an easier thing to, for us to enforce, because it would, you know, it would be a citation just like you would get any other citation, if you were driving a vehicle on the road that was not registered, you'd be cited for that, it's the same thing with the golf cart. If we're enforcing the state law with the ordinance, it would just be a fine. And then I think, Mr. Shavon, I could probably speak to this, but I think after three violations, then we would revoke that privilege, and I think the fines would increase each time.
We don't have an increasing schema in this, particularly when it's $50 per violation. Three within a three-year period, I believe it was, that, you know, you would not be able to register. Now, if you're operating a unregistered golf cart, if the town refuses to register, which we would do if it didn't have the headlights, the seatbelts, the rearview mirror, the stuff that's not on the typical... If, you know, the town, the officer has discretion, and I as the town attorney, or Chief Herring as the Chief of Police, cannot go to the officer and say, "You must do this," you know, because they are, they are, they have discretion, and they're sworn law enforcement officers. But I would imagine that the practice, because there is this very simple recourse, that, you know, the enforcement of falling outside of that, of this ordinance, if you fall outside of this ordinance, and you ignore the ordinance, and you ignore the requirements of registration and safety right here, that will, that law enforcement will be more likely to step it up a notch. If you own a golf cart, and you allow your juvenile to drive, and you're contributing to delinquency of minor, you'd be charged with that, you know, subject to civil revocation of your golf cart, you know, you could be charged criminally. So, a lot of things could happen, but I would imagine, you know, that, the warning would come up, because it's a relatively simple thing, and these safety requirements are not something that Chief Herring and I just pulled out of thin air, it's pretty much, everybody's got them.
Very similar, Kerry. It's very similar, Kerry, too.
So, you know, you go to anyplace in Florida where they allow them, that, you know, there's turn signals and horns, and, you know, all that, all that sort of stuff that you have to have on there. So, yeah, it's not the stock that you buy at the golf, you know, that the golf course buys. So, there are some modifications that are required.
Okay. Anything else for the Chief?
Chief, can I just ask you, ask a question?
Yes.
I've got a golf cart that's registered in South Carolina, headlights, taillights, turn signals, et cetera. It's not required to have seatbelts, and it's a, basically, it's a six-seater, I mean, two, two, and two. What kind of, did you get any feedback from Emerald Isle in terms of the seatbelts? That's the only issue about the golf cart that I seem to have some reservation. On the whole, I like the ordinance, I think it's great. No problem, long paths due, but I just, I just asked a question.
Not specifically. We didn't talk about the seatbelts specifically, we just talked about the ordinance in general, and, you know, they did comment that there's really good compliance there, you know, so I take that as, you know, they're complying with the ordinance completely, because that would be a violation of the ordinance, so they would enforce that piece of it, so, but we did not talk specifically about, you know, that piece of it.
It's more, it's just more from my case, it's more just curiosity than anyone else. I can see getting it retrofitted, and I'm sure it could be done to put, you know, to put seatbelts on there, but I just asked a question.
I think that, you know, we're thinking more in terms of, you know, the carts that have children on them, that could easily fall off. I mean, it could happen to an adult, too, but we're more concerned about this one.
I'm seeing Kerry get how to seatbelt, too.
Yep.
Go ahead, you ask, John. I've got a question for you, and going back to your hypothetical, when you first started, where Tim and I, and yourself, are all guilty of shotgun starts and violating the...
I've been there.
...the ordinance per se. And we're gonna regulate golf carts, and you've got two golf courses that regularly, you know, the golf carts are seen on the roads going between the holes and for shotgun starts. Is there any, do you see any need for language possibly in here to address the use of the roads by their golf, you know, golf carts as it relates to this? Because they're not gonna have, they're not gonna be outfitted the way the ordinance is.
That might be a case where the exception that you carve out might swallow the rule. You say, "All right, any golf cart that's associated with a golf course can be used at any time without these things," then...
And that's where I'm asking you to move the language.
You know, I probably would just say that the, you know, the selective enforcement that's going on, just continue on. I mean, it's just, if we tried to carve that out in the ordinance, I think it would be abused, you know. I'm more concerned with people abusing the exception than I am officers, you know, holding up shotgun starts at a chamber.
Don't want them to go out there and be that, but it...
And that's the current situation now, and we, and that is an excellent point, and I've thought about that, because we hear that now. So, we hear from, you know, from the family who's on the way, with the family and the noodles loaded up on the way through the pool, that we selectively enforce, and that we're targeting them, but we're not targeting... we're targeting them, but we're not targeting, you know, the individuals that are involving golf tournaments. Um, so, I mean, that, that, that's an issue, um.
One of the, one of the things though, that the golf course has the capacity, and you see it at other golf courses when you have shotgun start, they go on the, the golf track around to get to those holes rather than they get out on the streets. So they do have the, the capacity to utilize their golf.
Their private area. That's right. And this, this ordinance would exclude private use, use of a golf cart on a private area.
It would. Well, that's, that's a good point.
You know, we, we, I'm assuming we will communicate this to probably since the, the devil's bridge, so, you know.
They've been asking. They've been asking. I'll be happy to do that personally.
So does anything change as far, I mean, not that anybody drinks when they play golf or go to the pool.
Never.
But, um, I mean, does anything change if we do this ordinance to the drunk driving issues or are you allowed to have alcohol in your golf cart?
No, that would be, they would, they would use state law.
That would be still state, okay.
Yep.
I can see it, you know, we can work our way into this if we adopt this and then the police, uh, use their discretion and give warnings to, uh, those so that they can become compliant with whatever they want to do. So if you, they have that opportunity to know and want to put it into effect.
Chief, you and I have talked about this a lot and going back to the point about warning and ticketing, et cetera. Am I correct to say that in our town, the police person, male or female, has the discretion based upon whatever the search circumstance is to give a warning ticket versus a violation? Is that correct?
That's correct. And we give warnings.
A lot of people don't know that. And what percent of your ticketing versus warnings would you say?
Forty, forty-two percent of, of, of all vehicles that are stopped are cited. So, so, so more warnings are given than citations issued.
Because I don't always hear it that way from our friends, especially the ones who get a ticket. So just want to bring that up.
Well, that's good to know. That's, uh, they have that out there. So basically, you call the sixty percent are given warnings or given some kind of leeway in, uh, their, when they're stopped.
That's correct.
And I, I would think if we go ahead and approve this, it can also be amended later on, number one. But number two, as we work through the process, uh, discretion can be made, especially in the beginning, for those who wish to do it that way, for, for the officers. If they want to do a, a warning versus a, and a ticket, they can still do that, correct?
Well, typically our practice has been, and you, and you know this, from the, um, uh, our pedestrian crossing issues that we have, that we like to get, like to make sure that everyone's aware, uh, that there, there is a new ordinance in place. And, uh, you know, so there would typically be more warnings, more verbal warnings handed out. And in, in some cases, we even give, we give literature along with that.
I was gonna say, if you do that, then we're sure you do.
We would pass out the ordinance and say, just so you know that, you know, this is, this is a new ordinance that's in place and here's how you comply.
And maybe during the, well, communicating it, is that like that place in Puke where that sells golf carts and find out, you know, maybe give recommendations, go here to get it up, create a seatbelt and this and that, you know.
I'll be happy to be a part of that. I'm sure those will too.
Absolutely.
It's just a very important issue, as I say. I, I don't know if this is all the right answers, but you gotta, you gotta see things that we see. I see you shaking your head, yes. The kids sometime, I saw six kids on one cart going across Holly Springs Road, again, against the traffic, and that just scared the living, you know what, out of me.
Well, we watch golf, um, course communities now too, you know, it's twelve hours ago. We've been there, so, um, hopefully it'll be easier for people to have something locally.
You have a comment to make? Too long. Yeah, but actually, you see that example you just gave with the golf cart? Let's say I have a, well, let's say we pass this and I have a legally registered golf cart. Uh, I go from Sunset Ridge North to, uh, the golf course, to Devil's Ridge. I'm crossing a, uh, an NCDOT road. In fact, based on how this is written, that I cannot do.
I thought, I thought the way that, uh, well, I know the ordinance that we modeled it after allowed for the, the crossing, uh, of, of that state road, um, you, you could not drive along parallel with it or cut across at an angle. Is that?
The way it's written is you can't drive on it. Um, so it would be sort of a open interpretation as to whether or not crossing is on the road.
It's, it's similar to, you know, currently, uh, you have to cross over even at golf courses. If you, if you stay on the golf, your cart paths, there's a couple places you have to, uh, I think Salem Ridge is one where you cross over. And as long as you're not dr- riding on the road or, or parallel with it or on the sidewalk, then you should be fine.
Should we consider putting that in the ordinance?
Well, again, it's another situation where the exception might swallow the rule. If you stay, if I stay, you can, you can cross. Well, I was just crossing. I was going from Langsland on Holly, on Holly, west, on Holly Springs Road. And I was crossing over to the middle school. You know, I just, I was just crossing. The cross wasn't a ninety-degree angle. It's a, you know, thirteen-degree angle, but I'm crossing, you know. I'm driving on West Holly Springs Road and I'm crossing. So, yeah, I'd rather leave, leave no exceptions due to, to that. It may swallow up the rule. Um, and, you know, I, I don't think, uh, an officer is going to, you know, I, I don't know that, but give a ticket for driving on the.
Enforcement standpoint, that, that's not going to be, um, you know, that's not going to be the issue for us. We're going to look for the one, if they're crossing at a, at an angle and they're up on two wheels, like, like we see, that, that's, that's what we'll enforce. But, uh, you know, if you're safely crossing that road, then, you know, you're not.
They would have to obey the law, the, the traffic laws. There's a crossing, there's a light there and just like the car would be.
They can't drive on the sidewalk, can't drive on greenways, you know, so it's, um, it will eliminate a lot of the, the kids driving to the park, um, along the greenway practice.
Anything else?
Yeah, and I, I actually had a, I think it's a digital conversation with you.
A digital?
By email regarding, uh, what the, uh, the estimated cost would be, uh, or should be for registration and figured it should be about fifty dollars.
That's right.
And I would, um, you know, I, I would certainly want to include that in here, that the registration fee be, be fifty dollars and, and start charging it right away.
Versus, oh, it's a hundred or something like that?
Would you charge it, would you charge it now or wait until the new budget? Or until the new budget, you restart, please allow. Give everyone a chance to know it's coming and then back to.
It's starting July one. This is our chief of major.
It's pretty rough.
Yeah.
But we, so we're saying we're not going to register or they would register for free? Or is that, uh, because if we're going to register, I think we'd be, they'd be.
It would probably, for administrative purposes, maybe easier, just register everybody July first. So if you could give a free registration from now till July first, if you wanted to, but then come July first, when they, you know, so that everybody's, the registration expires at the same, maybe diff- depending if you have a hundred or.
Or we can make this effective July first.
Right.
Yeah, I like.
We just include that into the schedule.
Yeah, just something related, thing for now and then.
And pass, well, I'd actually pass that information between now and then.
Yeah, you could do the whole thing, effective July first.
It will be effective July first and this is what, its impact.
I'll start my car and start moving around.
So John, you're good till June thirtieth? You can ride with shotgun, you're, you're good.
Yeah.
No, I agree. I think that'd be from a logistics issue. I think that would be.
Well, that would work.
Everything will kind of line up with the budget and, uh, the, the education period and so forth.
And the fifty dollar fee is, is.
Yeah, you won't be surprised.
Deal. Sounds good.
There are municipalities that charge more, but they have their staff actually doing the inspections, which we will not be doing. So I think the fifty dollars will, will, you know, cover our, our registration costs.
So the fifty dollar fee would be part of the motion, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And effective July first, the whole thing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. You good with that?
Very happy with it. Y'all done a nice job. Thank you very much.
Yeah, John, thank you. Thank you, Emerald Isle. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate your talk. Uh, at this point in time, is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance fifteen dash oh two, amending the town code to add a new division seven to chapter twelve, article seven, and also, uh, charge a fifty dollar registration fee and for this ordinance to go into effect on July first, twenty fifteen.
I'll second that.
Let's make a second on favor.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passed unanimously. I did talk to Linda about this and, uh, I think she's on the same page that we are. Just to keep it record, okay? Thank you very much. I think this is something that may need to be changed later on or tweaked, but, uh, it's a step in the right direction to maybe save a life or two, and that's not all bad. Item eight B, new business, twenty fifteen, street improvement project, town of Holly Springs, project number fifteen dash oh oh one. Aaron.
Thank you, mayor. Town council.
Nice talk.
I like your talk.
Thank you.
Happy St. Patrick's Day to you too.
Everyone's Irish today. Uh, I'm here to present the two thousand fifteen street improvement project. Now, the town is responsible for maintaining over a hundred and ten miles of existing roadway within its borders. And every year we receive, uh, funds from DOT through their Powellville program to maintain these roads. Um, now, in order to select the roads that get maintained, uh, several years ago, the town had a formal evaluation completed of all the town, of all the roads in town. Uh, and this uses a, an industry standard, ASTM pavement condition rating. And then what the staff does each year is we go and we review the survey and, uh, we consider other things such as volume and connectivity, future projects that would happen on that road and funding. And, uh, the list that got, um, presented to town council includes these streets on this map. Uh, we have Osterville Drive up here on the top, Hyannis Drive, ARP Street, which includes two portions, uh, the long stretch from Blaylock to Bass Lake Road is going to be funded through the street, or the sewer reserves money, uh, with the ARP Street Force main. We wanted to go ahead and overlay this road. And then this other portion to the east of Bass Lake Road is included in the Powell bill. Um, in addition to that, we have Sturminster Drive, uh, Chilmark Ridge Drive, Thornton Green Place and Holly Meadow Drive. Um, in addition, we're also going to repaint the main street crosswalks out front of, um, town hall. Uh, now, we advertised this project and we received four bids last week. Barn Hill Contracting came in as the low bidder at five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Um, and the estimate, the engineer's estimate for that project was six hundred and thirty, so they came in a little under. And, um, we are actually currently pursuing an updated pavement condition survey for the other roads in town. Do I have any questions?
Questions or comments?
Chief, uh, Aaron, that section of ARP Street that goes, uh, the, you know, that little section there, it never seemed to have a final code on that. Was that ever accepted as far as the street in the town?
Um, you know, I'm not sure if that street got the final code on it or not.
No, it didn't.
It didn't. Okay.
We talked about it, but I'm pretty sure it did not.
It did.
I've driven on it.
Okay.
It's up to the little traffic circle that will lead, the little roundabout there? Is that what you're talking about?
Could you check on that for us, Aaron?
Yes, sir.
That was the defunct contractor, um, that we bought the police station property from, so was responsible for doing that road. And they, um, defaulted on their obligations to the town. That's why this has one of the, one of the default sidewalks and such through there, um, on the, on the front and side. That's what they did at one sidewalk, but they were, they were to do some other sidewalks. But, um, yeah, that, that explains that.
Good question. Thank you.
Uh, will you be letting HOAs and their neighborhood know about when this work is going to be done or wrapped?
Uh, yeah, we can definitely let the HOAs know.
Um, just so that they can let their neighborhoods know, to expect.
And our, our, we get our contractors, uh, they go out and they put door hangers.
Right.
So we will do that as well, but we can contact the HOAs.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Aaron, I got a quick question for you. Uh, with the, with the contingency and everything with Barn Hill, we're about six hundred thousand and the, uh, actual money that we're moving around are seven hundred and fifty-six. So it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we got, we're not going to spend as part of this contract.
Right.
Uh, do we have some other little projects that we're looking at to utilize those funds to?
We can pull out the, the street, uh, rating and take a look at some of the other roads that came close.
Because I know there's some other places in town that we, that need some, you know, that could stand a little attention here and there, a little loving care.
Sure.
So.
Can examine that?
Thank you.
What else?
I'm good.
You're good?
Good.
All right. Click to a motion, please, chief.
Motion to approve.
Go ahead.
Okay. Sorry. Motion to approve a warning paving contract to Barn Hill Contracting Company and to adopt a one billion, five hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollar amendment with fiscal year twenty fourteen, fifteen budget to cover the cost of the twenty fifteen street improvement project.
Second. Let's make a second on favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate. Click ARP Street, please. All right. Item number nine, other business, I'll just repeat what I always say, crosswalks, we're doing better. Uh, as soon as we get the crosswalks back and the signs up, we'll probably even do better than that. But, uh, it's been a little bit tricky to do that with the weather we've had. Had a little bad weather, somebody might remember that. And the campaign is still going, still appreciate the support of the police. And our anti-bullying campaign is gathering strength every day. And again, I always say the same thing, if you don't believe bullying is a problem, that's with kids and with parents, then talk to me anytime after that and I will tell you a couple of kids that didn't make it through it, period. So that's my story, I'm sticking with it. Others?
The, uh, I know, uh, Public Works Department, Alunsey McNeil put out a, a note to us that they're trying to catch up on all of the things that were, uh, delayed by the snow and ice that we had. Uh, one of the things that's popped up is our, our potholes on some of the, uh, main thorough repairs. If we can report those to the, uh, Public Works Department so that they can, uh, help finish putting those, uh, putting repairs in. I know there's some bad ones on Kildare Farm Road, uh, north of Holly Springs Road and other places around town. Uh, that, and, uh, they're trying to pick up the, uh, trash that's accumulated on the side of the road. So give them a little bit of patience and, uh, hopefully they'll get picked up here in a short, short period of time. Well, thank you.
Others?
You stole my thunder. I was going to comment about the trash pickup that they were doing in terms of keeping our town a beautiful place to live.
Well, we, we've all complimented many, many times, rightly so, our Public Works Department do. Some of these guys, and also, uh, I don't know if you know this or not, but Public Works Department's not the only one that does this. The parking wreck department are the ones that do the, uh, sidewalks, especially around town hall, the parking lots, am I correct, Lynn? And I saw them out there pretty early too, and they just did a heck of a job. I'm also very proud when I see the WRAL truck go from one town to another and say something like this, "Oh, the streets here are very good. We must be in Holly Springs." And I compliment these guys and gals for doing a darn good job and they, they deserve it too. Uh, anything else?
Um, I, I, very quickly, I've said it before and I'll say it again, um, you know,
I, I, very quickly, I've said it before, I'll say it again. You know, Holly Springs is very active on social media. Sometimes there's great stuff posted, sometimes not so great. But I really want to commend our staff, not only our communications department, but also just our town staff who have to see things on social media and answer them very diplomatically. They do a great job. You know, they leave the motion out. They give the facts and information on how to get, to find out more information if it's not enough. So, I think, I want to say, you know, thank you to the staff for doing that 'cause they have diffused quite a few situations.
Thank you. I remember ten, a manager's report.
Yes, sir. We actually have an item of business that we did not, that is not on your agenda, and that's not your fault. It was, it was a late, late arrival. It's related to the North Main Athletic Project.
Right.
It's, it's a change order associated with an item that was value engineered out previously.
Right.
And we would like to give you an update on that if you would and get, get some direction from the Town Council. Time is of the essence on that one.
Is there a different one that was in the consent agenda?
It's a, it's another change order.
It's another change order.
It's different than that.
Yes. We could have probably, we could have possibly put this on consent, but because it would, this is a grant-related item. We would not be bringing this to you if we had not been able to the grant.
Go, Lynn.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate your willingness to hear this despite our negligence, as it appears. We only had a few days and several hands for this item to go through. And somewhere we got lost along the way. But any event, the information is, is that early on in the bid process for Phase Two North Main, there were multiple alternate items within, within the bid. One of those, which we believe is, is essential for the operation of the park, was an additional restroom building. And the cost for that building in the alternate was three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, give or take. With, with the apparent grant awarding from Wake County for tourism purposes and directed toward North Main, we have the opportunity now to reinsert some of those items that we think are important and critical for the, the pleasure of our residents and for the operations of the facility. So, what we've done is we've asked the contractor, T A Loving, to give us a price for reinserting, and this is the first project that we'll be putting, hopefully putting back in, is that restroom building. It had to be, it'll have to be reinserted into the contract through a change order. So, we got a price from them. In that change order, the price went up from three hundred and twenty-seven thousand to approximately three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, which is reasonable, not as low as I would have liked, but I believe that to be reasonable. What we'd like to do is get your approval, since we don't have that million dollars yet, get your approval to borrow money, funds from the general fund balance until, until the time that we can get a contract signed with Wake County and start receiving those funds. So, before, before I ask you to vote on that, Daniel Weeks has been working with Wake County. We want to bring you up to date on that grant contract and where we are. And I believe staff is comfortable with the progress that we're making and we're, we're fully confident that the county's gonna follow through. So, I do want you to feel comfortable that we're gonna get the million dollars. So.
I'm very confident.
And, Daniel, can you just explain how that, that money can be used? Like, we can't put it towards, you know, widely in fair or something like that, if you're just commissioner. That's explained?
We were at the meeting and I, let me answer it by many. The way we presented it to the council or to the county commissioners, we had to take certain things out of the original contract to make do with what we had because we didn't get all the money we thought they would get. So, when we presented the million dollar proposition, it was for putting back into place those things that we had to take out in the first place that we felt very uncomfortable with, I guess is the right way to say it. So, that's kind of where we are on that, that subject. This is simply, they know this. And they also know we can't use it for road wide, if not even fair.
But that's why I want people to understand that this, this grant is just for this.
That's correct.
Right. I want people to just understand that.
Sure. Yeah, I believe that, and thank you for the question. I believe that Wake County's given us a lot of latitude to spend that money on the N Mac property. I don't even think we would have to limit it to the five or so items that we value engineered out of the project. But I think that that's, that's the, that's our intention. That's the way we conveyed it to the county during our presentation, that we would, we would spend the money on one of those five or multiple items of which the restroom facility that's in question tonight is one of those items. So, where we're currently at is Wake County's asked us to provide them some performance goals that we think we can meet over the next five years at N Mac, bringing in events, spectator-based events, participant events, things like that. So, Adam Huffman and our Parks and Rec Department and I have put together that list. We've submitted that to the county. And actually, we heard back today from Denise Foreman, the assistant to the county manager, that she liked, she liked what we submitted. She wanted to reduce our time that we could meet those goals by, but at the same time, she reduced the number of events we, that we would have to hold. So, really, it was a wash. We, we are completely fine with what she submitted back today. So, having said that, I think the next step is she will then get these performance goals to Scott Warren, the county manager, who will in turn put it into the actual grant agreement. He will let us see that before it goes before the county, before the commissioners. Can't say when that will be. I expect it will be in the next, say, three, five weeks. It will be on the county commissioner's agenda. But until that time, we, we're proposing to move forward with the plan that Lynn said, just borrow, borrow from the general fund fund balance and then replenish that with the new dollars.
How much was it again, Lynn?
It's three hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Three seventy-nine.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
I know we got, we got the fund balance, right?
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
What's the time limit that they wanted you do these events? How many years do they wanna get it done?
Really, the answer to that is seven years, although they would like us to meet it in five. But if we can't meet it in five years, then they will institute what's called a two-year rollover period. They give us an extra two years to meet. I have a feeling we'll be able to meet, we'll meet this in probably three years.
So, I think you've got a pretty high return on investment, obviously, as well.
It goes out.
It's what it's calculating out to. If you can, if you can do it in three, a little more than three and less than five.
That's right.
So, that's, that's good.
Also, just for the record, the, the current board of the county commissioners, if you didn't know this, I think most of you do, the vote for our request was unanimous. And that's kind of nice, good news. They have been excellent to work with. I continue to feel that they're gonna be excellent to work with. So, just so you know, they're a good group of guys and gals. They've been very supportive of Holly Springs, very much so. I appreciate that. Anything else? I guess we need a motion for three seventy-nine.
Motion to. Is it amend the?
I'll price borrowing.
I think it's. Motion's change order. Okay. Motion to approve the proposed change order for the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for the North Main Athletic Complex facility.
Sir. Let's make a second own favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you.
Did you need a motion to, to, to the budget part, to change that?
What we can do is we can put together a budget amendment based on what we described today. We can have it in the next agenda as it, as it can send out.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just make sure we got the items on.
No, you were thinking the same thing I was because it, that wasn't included in the initial, in motion.
Exactly.
One other thing while, while we're on this, on this topic, tomorrow, I believe at eight o'clock at the Cultural Center, Lynn and his staff have invited a number of business owners to talk about the sports tourism and economic impact, economic opportunities for the, for local businesses. So, it's really our attempt to do some outreach, which we're really excited about. And I imagine each of you would certainly be invited to attend that if you'd like. Is that, that from eight, eight o'clock until?
Probably from nine to nine thirty.
I'll be there.
Won't keep folks too long, but yeah, very good event.
I'm missing the Town Hall.
This is, that's okay. Okay. The only other item I have is March twenty-eighth, which is on Saturday morning. Will be our final winter farmers market event, and that's from ten to twelve, or ten to one.
To one.
At the Cultural Center.
Do you have any idea how the turnout's going this year in terms of?
I would, I would invite our planning director to come up, but I understand it's been surprising what's wrong.
I saw her right there and she was on the edge of her seat. And I'm sure she's got her. She would love to tell us.
Didn't she raise her hand?
Well, she didn't raise her hand, but she was like coming up to, her ears perked up.
Hi, Gia.
Hi. We've actually had some really good turnout. We've been really excited about it. We've had four markets so far. This will be our fifth one. And I think last month, we had about a hundred and sixty-five people come through. Our first market in November was our largest, where we had just under two hundred people. And our vendors have been completely ecstatic. They've been selling out at every market we've had. And really, what it is, is that what we find at this market is being indoor, being wintertime, people are coming that want to go and buy as opposed to those people that come and stroll through the market on a beautiful summer's day. And that's perfectly fine. We want them there too. So, it really has been very, done very well for us.
You average, what, five to seven, five to nine visitors average, or five to seven?
So, we've had, I think the smallest number we've had has been maybe eight.
Or ten.
And then we're gonna have a full room at this final one. We're really excited about that. So, we've never done it before and it, it went very well. And just doing some outreach with our vendors this week, and they definitely want to do another winter market again. And hopefully, some of our produce vendors can plant accordingly, knowing that we will have a winter's market so they can plant vegetables that can be available in the wintertime. So.
Good job.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Kind of did you sure were there though?
She knew it was a brand. All right. Anything else, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a closed session, Council?
Yes, sir. There's two matters I'd like to get your input on regarding litigation matters pursuant to one forty-three, three eighteen, that eleven, eight, three involving the North Main Athletic Complex, Phase One contract creator Fred Smith, and the Main Street Extension, condemnation action, fourteen CBS, one-one-six-two-seven.
Move to go into closed session?
Second.
Let's make a second own favor.
Aye.
Close session. Thank you all for coming.